There we go. 9:32, we'll call the meeting to order. We have an invocation by Pastor George Schnick from the Redemption Chapel.
Can you hear me? Okay, okay. Well, it's an honor to come and be with you all again. And I was minding my own business at home. And then that character Roy Torgerson called me and said, can you come and do this? Now I see he's guarding the goodies. So we know that he has a calling. So good to be with you. And I don't know if you, a lot of you don't know me. I've been around here longer than whatever, 36 years I've been hanging out in Vernon County. And good to come and see you. And you know, I'm in the people business and so are you. We're servants of people. And right now people are messy and the world is messy. And as we think about Christmas, I think about Jesus being born in a stable. And you know what? We're kind of operating that way right now. The world's kind of messy and people are messy. And y'all have a tough job, okay? And I appreciate you and it's an honor to come in and share with you this morning. Oh, I have about an hour and a half sermon, but I know you don't have time for that. So what I do want to share with you is this. I was thinking about something in the Bible. And there was a king one time and they were being invaded. Israel is getting invaded again. Seems like that happens a lot. And the king didn't have a clue what to do. And he said this prayer. God, I don't have a clue what to do, but my eyes are on you. That's all I got. And God intervened and helped them. Let's pray, please. Father, we thank you that even as we think about Christmas, we know that you're a God who meets us on our turf. You're willing to come and be where we are, whether it's in a county board building or in a church or in a back alley somewhere where there's a drug addict who needs some help. You're ready to meet us where we are. So Lord, I thank you that you're going to be here with these folks as they discuss the business of our county. You'll give them wisdom and guidance. And when they don't know what to do, that they'll be open to you intervening for them. Thank you for their service. Thank you for their commitment and their dedication. Thank you, Lord, that we get to serve you together in this place. In Jesus' name, amen. And I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, okay? Because I got the podium and I can say whatever I want. God bless.
Do you want to shut that mic?
Thank you and Merry Christmas to you too.
Thank you, and also.
We're going to move 14A to right after six. Without objection. Have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance since the United States of America. To the area of all living for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Meeting been properly posted? There was no objection. Is that correct?
That's correct. The meeting was properly posted.
Go call.
District one, oops. District one, White Lake.
Present.
District two, Semke.
Here.
District three, Gady.
Here.
District four, Bringey.
Here.
District five, Ofty.
Present.
District six, Bedready. District seven, Mehan Strum. District eight, Egan. District nine, Olson. District 10, Easterday. District 11, Jacobson. District 12, Henry. Holiday present. District 13, Taylor. District 14, Yitri. District 15, Schweiger. District 16, Wilson. District 17, Muller. District 18, Mitchell. District 19, Stanek. All present and accountable.
Any discussion on it? Any corrections? Motion by Dave Egan. Seconded by Ollie. All in favor of approving the minutes, signified by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Okay, Marissa. You have a presentation.
Hi, I'm here virtually. Can you guys hear me? Um, I guess this question is for Jerry or Bobby. Do I have the ability to share my screen?
I do indeed.
Okay. We'll do that then. Okay, do you guys see a presentation up on the screen? That says Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres, senior living across the top. Do you guys see that at all?
We do online.
Can you guys see it in the boardroom at all? Sorry, I can't hear anyone in the boardroom if you guys are speaking.
So we do see it. It's only on one of our monitors. Is there a way for you to blow it up a little bit?
Um, yep. Does that help at all? I can just scroll through it slowly.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, my name is Marissa Powers. I'm with Johnson Block and Company. And I was the audit supervisor on Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres, December 31st, 2022 financial statements. Um, I was asked to come to this board meeting, I think by some board members and Bobby and Jerry, just to go over some Vernon Manor's financial stuff. Um, again, the stuff I'm going over is from 2022, so 12 months after the fact. So some of this might not even apply, but this is the most recent information that we have. This is the last financial statement audit that we did. But this presentation I have is the one that we gave to the Board of Trustees at Vernon Manor back in June, I believe. And I'm not going to go through this whole thing in detail again because it's 12 months after the fact. But since you guys want some financial information, I was just going to highlight some things. Um, this first thing is Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres' statement of financial position. Um, so it was in Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres as two separate funds. So for December 31st, 2022, Vernon Manor had total assets approximately 4.5 million and Vernon Acres had total assets approximately 6.7 million. And within those total assets, um, I know this was a discussion that I believe Jerry and Bobby had a question on. Is this accounts receivable net of allowance? Um, we'll get more into detail this later. We have some charts and stuff that explain this accounts receivable. Um, but Vernon Manor had accounts receivable approximately 1.3 million net of allowance. Um, on this next, this is just a trend analysis and accounts receivable. Okay, so this is just accounts receivable. This does not include the allowance of bad debts and nets with the accounts receivable. Um, so Vernon Manor, and again, this is just Vernon Manor, this is not Vernon Acres, um, has had increasing accounts receivable for the last several years. Um, so 20, in 2021, they had ending accounts receivable approximately 1.2 million and 2022 approximately 1.4 million. Um, and if anyone has any questions at any time, feel free to stop me if you want to discuss something in further. That's totally fine, too. Um, a large part of this increase, um, when you have changeover in staff, especially staff that do your billing at a nursing home, it can get really out of hand. I've seen, um, I audit five other nursing homes and I've seen billing. Um, if you don't stay on top of it, it can get quite out of hand. Um, because there's timeframes too, that you can only bill Medicaid and Medicare and family care. And also private pay can get out of hand. This next table is just a trend analysis and allowance for uncollectible accounts or your bad debt allowance. Um, as you could see, so on the previous page, I'm just going to go back real quick. You can see that there's this large increase in accounts receivable over the years. So and for the last couple of years, um, we have made adjustments to the bad debt allowance to help reflect that. Um, so we have increased the allowance for bad debts, meaning that we have determined that there are accounts that are in accounts receivable that do not have a high probability of being collectible. So we write them off in the year that we determined they are collectible to expense and create this allowance in accounts receivable. So in 2021 and 2022, we had allowance for uncollectible accounts of 165,000 and 160,000. Meaning that's, we determined that of the AR, we're fairly very confident that 160,000 of that will not be collectible. Um, this next table is the statement of net position or your balance sheet, just the liabilities and the net position side of it. Um, just wanted to highlight some things here. So Vernon Manor had total liabilities approximately, um, 3.1 million and Vernon Acres had total liabilities approximately 4.8 million. Uh, and one thing I just wanted to highlight in this, so in this long-term liabilities, there's this advance from county. So what this advance is, is Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres' share of the county pooled cash. So they actually have a deficit of the county pooled cash. So for our financial statement purposes, we have to remove that as like a liability against the county rather than showing negative cash on the financial statements. So Vernon Manor's as December 31st, 2022, um, negative pooled cash approximately 2.8 million and Vernon Acres was approximately half a million. Um, and then your net position down here. Um, again, this first column is Vernon Manor and the second column is Vernon Acres. Um, your net position are just your equity. Um, there's three classifications for Vernon Manors and Vernon Acres since they are proprietary funds of the county. Um, net investment in capital assets, your restricted net position and your unrestricted. Um, so in your unrestricted, you had a deficit in both of them. Um, in Vernon Manor of just under 2 million and in Vernon Acres of just over half a million. Both deficits here. Um, and this restricted, this net pension asset, that's something that's out of the county's control. That is a number we get from the Wisconsin retirement system that says we have to restrict it. Um, yeah, and then net investment in capital assets. This is just basically the, their capital assets last accumulated depreciation. And Vernon Acres obviously had a large one since you guys have that brand new facility that isn't fully depreciated yet. This is a trend in that net position that I was, sorry, was our question? No, okay. This is a trend in that net position for just for Vernon Manor. Um, this red line is your net investment in capital assets. Um, this has stayed fairly consistent over the years. This green line is your restricted, which is that net position for WRS, which you have no control over of what that number is. I think in, in fact, in 2023, that number is a liability. So this line won't even be here. This line won't even be on the chart. And then this declining one is your unrestricted net position. Because you have had deficits since, looks like almost since 2018. Um, it's just been declining. Um, unrestricted net position. Um, this page, um, this is Vernon Acres' trend analysis in your, in the net position. Um, obviously they opened up in 2020, so it was the first year that we had financial data. Um, and it's, so the screen one again is the net position that you guys don't have for, or net asset that you don't have control over for WRS. And this red one is your investment in capital assets, which is again, a new facility. And Vernon Acres has had an operating, um, unrestricted net position deficit, um, since 2020. Um, this is another one of the bulk financial statements. This is your statement of revenues, expenses and changes in net position or the income statement. Um, Vernon Manor had total operating loss approximately 844,000. Vernon Acres had an operating loss approximately 314,000. So these are operating losses. So then down here, the next section is non-operating revenues and expenses. So Vernon Manor also being government-owned nursing home gets supplemental payments from the state. And they also had a grant this year. So total operating revenues that Vernon Manor had this year are approximately 942,000. And then interest expense for Vernon Acres was approximately 51,000. Um, and then we also had some transfers from the county, I believe, which was some whole chunk money that was allocated to Vernon Manor. Um, and then in Vernon Acres, there's some tax levy for to pay their interest on their debt. Um, this is a graph for Vernon Manor operating revenues. Again, this is just for the Manor. This is not Vernon Acres. Um, between 2017 and 2022. Um, so Vernon Manor did have an increase in operating revenues between 21 and 22. Um, their operating revenues in 2022 were approximately 6.4 million. Um, this is just a breakout of what makes up those operating revenues from the previous page. The majority of Vernon Manor's revenues are made up of Medicare and Medicaid. Medicaid is 32% of revenues and Medicare is 29% of revenues. And these other payer sources are family care and private pay. And this overall makeup is very similar to 2021. Uh, this is a comparative graph of Vernon Manor operating expenses, again, just for Vernon Manor. Um, as you can see between 2021 and 2022, Vernon Manor did have an increase in operating expenses, which was a corresponding, um, there's a corresponding increase in operating revenues as well. And total operating expenses for Vernon Manor were approximately 7.3 million. Um, this is a breakout of Vernon Manor's operating expenses for 2022. Obviously, the largest category here, 53%, is your nursing services, as it should be. Um, then you have fringe benefit, general services and all these other categories as well. Um, the overall makeup of how this pie is split is very similar to 2021. Um, next we have Vernon Manor's operating expenses, just so you guys can see. So it's just like same categories from the previous page, nursing services, fringe benefits. Um, so you guys just can see them more in a trend analysis way. Um, so all fairly comparable with the fringe benefits decreasing here. Um, and then an increase in this orange one, which is nursing services. And this nursing services, um, has increased because, um, the current environment with trying to retain qualified nursing staff at a nursing home and having to pay bonuses and incentives and have higher wages. Um, this is Vernon Manor's bad debt expense. Like I was discussing earlier, bad debt expense goes hand in hand with the allowance, um, for AR. So this year, um, we did record a bad debt expense of approximately $120,000, um, which means we added $120,000 of expense on Vernon Manor's, um, income statement to essentially not write off because the Board of Trustees does that, but put it in the allowance to be eventually written off and approved by the Board of Trustees for debt that we feel is not collectible. Uh, this page, um, I'm not going to go into too much detail on this, but, um, nursing home resident days, it did increase from 21 to 22. So approximately $22,000, $22,000 resident days. Um, and then percent of occupancy to available beds, Vernon Manor was approximately 75.73% occupancy for the year 2022. And I'm not going to go into too much detail on these ones just because they just break out the payer sources a little bit more. Um, it just tells, this chart just tells you which payer sources had the most census days, meaning which, um, types of residents have you, were most accepted in 2022 or most in Vernon Manor in 2022. Overall, it stays fairly consistent. If you look at 2017 to 2022, I mean, there was some change in 2017, but between 2020, 2022, there's some fluctuation in how it gets made up, but stays fairly consistent. Again, this is, uh, resident care revenue by payer source. Um, so you have your payer sources, family care, Medicaid, private pay, Medicaid. Um, and your revenue, the largest, um, sources that made up your revenue were Medicare and Medicaid again. Um, and this is just some debt schedules that we are taking directly from our audit report, um, for Vernon Acres debt since Vernon Acres has that new debt for that new facility. Um, the balance due at December 31st, 2022 was approximately 4.3 million. And the current portion that you paid, I'm assuming already paid in 2023, was approximately 150,000. And that debt is made up of two different notes. Um, and that's all I had. So this is again from 2022. Um, does anyone have any questions or anything they want to discuss specifically? I know that there's been some discussion that you guys wanted more information on something. And I guess I'm unclear in what you guys want an explanation more of.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, a layman's interpretation of accounts receivable is, I think I understand it, but give me that, please.
Yeah, so accounts receivable. So let me just pull that back up. Um, so here it says accounts receivable net of allowance. So this says 1.2 million. We're going to go here. So the actual AR balance as December 31st, 2022 is 1.4 million. So accounts receivable is when Vernon Manor gets a resident, they have those days or whatever. So then they bill Medicaid and Medicaid. If it's private pay, then they bill, um, the resident directly, the resident's family directly. Um, and then until that, um, bill is paid by the resident or Medicaid or Medicaid, it sits out in accounts receivable. Um, so they recognize the revenue right away because they earn the revenue. But until they get essentially that cash from those payer sources, it sits in accounts receivable. And then
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. And then, um, you're sorry, I'm assuming your question, other side of that is on allowance? Or how their allowance works?
Go ahead.
Um, and I was gonna say, the other side of accounts receivable, um, so accounts receivable is 1.4 million. And the other side of that is the allowance for uncollectible accounts are also called the allowance for bad debt. Um, and what that is, is it gets netted with accounts receivable on the financial statements. And what this says is that, okay, of that 1.4 million of accounts receivable, we are saying that 160,000 of that, we basically know is not going to be collectible. You will not get the cash for that. It is recognized revenue, but you will not be getting the cash for that. So therefore, we have to recognize an expense to write that off because you're not going to get that.
Okay, how about, you said you, you have four other nursing homes that you audit? Or is everybody, everybody losing money like this?
Government nursing homes? Yes, I would say government nursing homes have not been faring as well. I will say Vernon Manor does have an AR aging problem, um, which we've been addressing over the last couple of years. And it's, it, like I said during my presentation, it's really hard when you have turnover in the billing department. If you get behind even for one month with billing, it can become a disaster. If you have somebody in there that's not a qualified person that already has experience with billing Medicaid and Medicaid or family care and all these other payer sources and insurances, they're very hard to work with. Um, and if, if you don't do it within the allotted time, then you kind of lose out on money. And especially if you don't have somebody in that position, then you're, that's when it increases your bad debts. Um, so yeah, to answer your question, yes, a lot of my government-owned nursing homes are struggling right now. Um, there's not as much aid coming from the government.
How about assisted living? Uh, they seem to be thriving in the private sector.
Assisted livings in the private sector?
Yes.
Yeah, I have, I don't have any assisted livings in the private sector. I have one in the government sector. I think that one does okay. Um, yeah, and I don't know if it's
Does it simply come down to marketing or assisted?
I was just gonna say, I don't know if it's systematic because Vernon Acres is new and it's not, hasn't been out there as much. Um, that your residents really aren't aware that that's an option. I guess I'm, I'm not sure. Um, but yeah, I guess I can't speak as knowledgeable on the assisted living portion of it. Um, because I only have one other assisted living. Um, but um, I do know that their assisted livings aren't um, they're faring okay, I believe, but they're not like bankrolling and taking on the nursing home's losses. If, if you understand what I mean. They're not like evening that out. They're kind of just netting themselves, I believe. Does you want any clarification on that?
Well, as a board, if we're looking at this, and I have attended some of the Vernon Manor meetings, because I wanted to get a grip on what was happening here. This report's also a year old. So you have to remember that this was during COVID. There were caps. There were times when they couldn't have anybody in because of COVID. So we are out of that crisis time. So you have to go back a year and remember how hard it was. So I don't want you to just look at these numbers and this represents last year. This is a year beyond that. So that's important to look at this. In that meeting, and correct me, board trustees, if I'm wrong, one of those debts alone was 100,000. And that's an issue in itself. And I had an issue with them writing that off. Because I think there is, there's, there's a couple of things going on here, from what I'm understanding of what's happening out there. With that turnover, if you have somebody that's in high nursing home care, it's close to, what, between 8,000 and 10,000. You get behind a month or whatever, that debt's piling up and piling up. And if we are overturning and overturning, we have nobody collecting. I believe there is some way to collect from that bad debt that we have not explored enough yet. I am not willing to write off 100,000 because that person received care in good faith. The family shut accounts down. So somebody's got money. So that's very irritating to me. Second, marketing is nonexistent. We are in property management. There is nothing on those sites to let people know we have this available. We have a new website coming, but that's a year out. They cannot wait. Every month you wait, you are losing $4,200 in a room being filled at our assisted living. That is money you are losing click, 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 click. And we have 10 beds, 10 rooms available? That's a lot of money, in my opinion. That's the other flip side. Now staffing has been an issue. Staffing's an issue everywhere. Let's look, I think we have many things we can explore to do this. You know, we could have somebody else manage it. If that's a difficult task to do, maybe we've tasked too many things on an administrator in the past. That could be looked at. I also believe maybe we need to be a smaller bed unit to 40. Because if we can't find staffing, then why are we trying to be a facility that is a higher level bed facility? I think we also need to look at the percentage of what we take for Medicaid. But we have to look at when somebody checks in, and I've said this at the trustee meeting, and I've gone through nursing home care for my mother and my parents, I've done assisted living, I've done independent. We had to provide our financials saying they could pay three years on their own. And I have to show that every year, my parents have always been independent pay. I have to show those records to them as proof that we can pay for three years. Because imagine what that debt would be. My mom's at a facility at 6,200 a month. And it's also withdrawn from the bank automatically.
I really appreciate the comments. We need to get back to the
That's my only comment. Let's get back to the financial report, not an assessment of solutions.
Yep. I guess I have a question is, you know, you've got other nursing homes that you do work for. How does our private pay and Medicaid and Medicare compare with, you know, the private ones and the government ones? Is that where our main, you know, main problem is at? Not enough private pay?
Actually, I would say Vernon Manor's clientele. So being a county owned nursing home, you guys aren't a for-profit nursing home. Meaning like those for-profit nursing homes, they're not accepting people that are Medicaid. They're not accepting people unless if they're private pay, they better have a lot of assets. Whereas like your accounting owned nursing home, and you guys kind of have that fiduciary duty to accept if they're a resident or citizen of Vernon County, to accept them, kind of regardless of their financial outlook. Okay. But the problem is, is that a lot of these people are qualified to be on Medicaid. A lot of times, not a lot of times, but sometimes I see that the applications just slip. Their family or their resident doesn't properly apply within the window to be on Medicaid. So then they automatically default to private pay, and they don't have these assets to pay private pay. Sometimes we can go back, or Medicaid will allow you to go back and retro pay if they get the paperwork in. That happens, but sometimes it doesn't. And you just kind of eat that cost. And it's kind of like your county, it's kind of what the county wants. Like you are a government owned nursing home, you're a county owned nursing home, you, you get tax, some tax income and all this stuff, and grants from the government. Like what is your duty, essentially? Like can you, do you feel comfortable denying these people because they don't have assets, I guess? And if you do, that's how you choose to run your county. I guess I don't know the laws on that. I don't know how that works. But I know that that is a large portion of government, county, or not even government, even city owned nursing homes, that they struggle with people, lower income people versus the for-profit nursing homes, they can turn those people away. So Vernon, let's go to this chart. Let me see if I can find it. So obviously
Assisted or a living, does, okay, so the assisted and nursing home are two separate accounts. In the assisted, do you have to accept everybody?
No.
Okay, so assisted, if assisted was making money, that could help counter what we need to do as a county in the nursing home portion, correct?
It could, but the way Vernon Acres is set up, is it set up as a separate fund? I mean, you could help it with the county's, our Vernon Manor's deficits. But then again, you have to find people that can pay that private pay and actually pay it.
Correct.
So it's kind of, people are struggling right now. And it's hard to find money to pay for things like that. But regarding payer sources, so this is Vernon Manor's payer sources. So obviously, the payer source that you want is Medicare. They pay at higher rates. But not everyone is, has Medicare. It's mostly Medicaid, which Medicaid in 2022 did help. They switched to how they were paying their payment model. And they increased their rates quite a bit. So that helped out. But then private pay, you could make a lot of money if people paid. It's just the problem of, do you feel like your clientele or your residents have the ability to pay that amount?
Erin B. Hough?
I have a couple of questions back to your figures that you showed. And on page five of your report, you had the accounts receivable. And I just want to clarify, because I think this is accurate, but not sure. You've listed the accounts receivable from back through 2015 up through 2022.
Yep.
And those numbers, they're separate for each year. And so it still means that we have 459,900 some dollars in 2015 outstanding? Or is that the number that was outstanding at that time? And we may have collected some of it?
That was the number that was outstanding at that time. And I would assume if it's from 2015, it should either be collected or have been written off. Because it's just bad practice to carry allowances or an AR for five plus years.
So in reality, what we have in this report doesn't show us our total tally of bad debt, cumulative tally of bad debt over how, say, the last five or eight years? As to what it is standing is at the end of 2022.
Correct. I only had the ending allowance number. I can show you the bad debt. Let me find that.
Yep.
We have bad debt expense, which I think is what you're getting at. So it shows what was actually written off. And I mean, you can add up all these numbers, I guess, if you want to. Down here, they'll show you the total amount that was written off since 2015.
Okay, thank you. The, the next question I have relates to page seven and eight. And on your page seven, it's the statement of net position. And when I go down under Vernon Manor, of course, you have all the liabilities and, and the ultimate net flow there in terms of the liabilities. And that's a follow-up from, or is it only the net liabilities? Anyway, bottom line, and then you have the assets. Okay, so at the bottom, it, it says total net position, 695,965. And you're on page eight, that also shows a reflection from 2016, what our net position was at the end of those years. The question I have is, is, does that mean that in relation to the assets that we have, all that have been included in all of our liabilities, that that's really what we have to go on? Or before we would possibly turn upside down? Is that not an accurate interpretation? What is?
That is inaccurate, that is inaccurate interpretation. So your net position or your equity. So it's your assets less your liabilities equals your equity. So what this is telling us, so, but because our accounting standards require us to have different levels of your equity, your net position. So what this is telling us is that basically you are in a deficit. Basically Vernon Manor does not have any reserves to fall back on, is what that tells me.
And then
Because these two parts, so yes, you have a total overall net position that is positive of approximately 700,000. But those are essentially like restricted in your capital assets. So you could liquidate your capital assets and sell them off. Or, and then this 1.7 is you can't even touch. You guys cannot touch that at all. So your fallback, essentially Vernon Manor's net worth, almost, if you think about it in terms of like your personal financial stuff, is your assets less your liabilities equals your net worth, is a deficit.
And that would be because it's an older building. And we're the opposite at assisted because that's a new building.
I mean, that does play into it, but not necessarily. Because the building portion is just this net investment in capital assets. Whoops, just this top line.
And then if, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. And then, so this is a positive number. And then, yeah, this is negative. Sorry, what was your question?
And so then in addition to that, you previously talked about the fact that we had a negative cash balance
Yep.
as well, that's not included here?
Which that is a large portion of probably what kicks out that deficit. Because again, it's your equities, your assets minus liabilities equals your equity. And in your liabilities, you have this almost $3 million advance from county, which is Vernon Manor's portion of the pooled cash, which is a deficit.
Thank you.
This is Chris Brigham. I have my hand raised. I, I don't know if anybody saw it. I have Michelle White here with me. Would like to have a few comments, please.
In regard to bad debt, I want you to know that many of the claims are bad debt is illegal right now. And it takes a while. So we do not write off bad debt unless we have exhausted all other avenues of recoupment. So I just want you guys to understand, we have like four items with apt and swain. And so they are, one of them is quite large, 100,000. So it's in the courts right now. So we do not write off unless, again, we have exhausted all other avenues. And when Marissa and I met, we went through each